And Xi Eun Chee for introduction of Aura, which will be followed by the MOU signing ceremony. So let us please welcome Professor Pil Ju Kim first.
Hello, everyone. I am Pil Ju Kim from Kyung Sang University. I felt like I'm in the wrong place because I focus on agricultural field, right? And I teach like soil. And I didn't know it was such a big scale international conference. Had I known, I should have prepared my slides in English and I could have given a presentation in English. But I was just told to talk about the voluntary reduction, carbon reduction. And I was told that I would give presentation only for like 15 minutes. So I have to like compress my presentation. I actually had a chance to attend a similar conference last year. And it was a rather smaller scale, so I didn't feel so nervous. So if I, my presentation seems kind of not appropriate so much, I ask for your understandings. So we've been focusing on ecological agriculture to save the earth. But we need to go beyond that to realize carbon agriculture. And I was told to give a presentation on greenhouse gas reduction plan through investment in ecological agriculture. So I'm a farmer, right? So what do I know so much about ESG? The thing is, I've been working as certification committee member for carbon greenhouse gas emission run by the Ministry of Environment. So I may have some relevance to this conference. And I'm a researcher in, you know, the means of reducing LUSF, landfill use land use change in forestry. And as you, as you could see, the figure is keep on growing. This only considers the pure emitted carbon volume. This not, this does not include the use of the plastics and everything. And what you see down here below, the green, blue bars is about the changes in GHG emissions and absorption by sectors in Korea. We need to efficiently reduce the overall carbon emissions to realize carbon neutrality. You know, we plant trees to absorb carbon, but complete absorption is kind of impossible. That's why we need to utilize carbon sinks. And how is what I'm going to talk about. Agricultural field has three different elements of GHG. Right, CO2 and methane and nitrous oxide. And agricultural field focuses on methane. When you grow rice and grow cows, there's a lot of methane emitted. But the thing is, the greenhouse effect is higher than that of the carbon dioxide. That's why this is much more expensive than a carbon dioxide. So if you reduce one ton, then it could be traded with 1 million Korean won. And N2O, the agricultural field uses the most of nitrous oxide as fertilizers. So if we could reduce just a little, it can create a huge impact. So if you could reduce a little bit, I could maybe sell it, traded in like 1.2 million Korean won for you. So from an overall point of view, you could have two different ways to reduce carbon. First, increase the carbon isolation volume. One, through soils organic carbon accumulation. So in countries where they have vast farmlands, this is one of their core or key technologies. The other one is to develop crops that has larger crop absorption capacity, carbon absorption capacity. 60% of Korea's farmland is a rice paddy, where emits immense amount of methane. Also in Vietnam, 50% of the entire methane emission comes from farmland, rice paddy in particular. New Zealand as well. Greenhouse gases are mostly emitted in growing cow farming. Globally, 25% of greenhouse gases is coming from farming. And reducing the GHG emissions, you could work on rice paddy. And also farm, like protected cultivation and orchard. Now talking about the voluntary GHG reduction projects. First one, external projects, CDMs. And second, incentives. For example, there is about 2.32 kilometers per hectare methane emitted per day from rice paddy. And if you could reduce 40% from that and converge that into the GHG reduction, then you could reduce 2.92 tons of carbon dioxide per day. And then if you provide incentives to the, you know, farming households and companies by Ministry of Agriculture, Food and Rural Affairs, they could voluntarily work on reducing greenhouse gases. And then they will be monitored, how much they have reduced. And then they will receive incentives. We could also model after exemplary cases from other countries. So it can be quite a blue ocean. So mostly, we've been focusing on the energy use efficiency improvement. For example, inside the energy facility, how you could install high efficiency thermal insulation material like multi-layer thermal curtains or recollect unused thermal energy or installing circulating water film cultivation or replace with LED lights. Or you could use the new renewable energy projects, like replacing with geothermal heat pumps. Or you could also carry out the nitrogen fertilizer reduction projects as well as projects that utilizes agro livestock byproducts and biomasses. And then trade the reduced amount of greenhouse gases. So the greenhouse gas emission reduction project enforcement procedures. First, the best one would be the developing the methodology. For this to be possible, we need the IPCC guidelines and we need to register our methodology. Also, when we reduce the gases, when there is a factor developed, you just multiply that factor to the area of the farmland, then that's the calculation method. And then in the field has been during, it has to continue for three years as one cycle. So there has been a lot of emission factors and developed methodologies. So please go ahead and, you know, implement the project and you just need to report it later. So if you want to reduce specific gas for specific area of your farmland by cutting the use of water for, you know, certain period of time, be specific in creating the report and submit it to the agency. It's difficult to actually get into it. But once you start on it, you, you have a benefit or advantage of being able to keep going with it. Next one, by, through land use change, you have to remove grass and trees, right? This is what we have been doing, right, leading to the depletion. So then you need to now find a way to increase soil carbon stock by conservative management. Professor Ok mentioned, well, is here with us, but I'd like to introduce the concept of biochar. When the biochar is spread upon the land, you can increase the accumulation of CO2. And what's also important is the processed volume of CO2, right? And then, how much of carbon stock is there in the land? And the broken, not broken down flexions, how much of that is in the land? Up until now, the agricultural waste has been just reused as fertilizers. But now you could produce biochar and utilize that like farm oils. Many big companies are utilizing this method to put biomass and then turn that into biofuels. And then there are the Standard Fertilization Control Act, which provides specific guidelines as to what kind of crops should be used for, you know, how much per, how much of an land area. So substitute that into that equation, right? This is to calculate the secureable amount of the emission permission through a biochar application. Carbon trading will give you the price of 40,000 to 50,000 won for per carbon, right, per ton. But when applying biochar, it's going to be, the price will be higher. So for all this time, I focused on increasing the soil organic matter decomposition in land. But in terms of global warming performance, it was not so effective. But when you focus also on reutilizing methane and trading it, because it has larger, higher impact on the land, the effect is also much higher. In the winter, it's dry, so methane is not really emitted. But in wet seasons, there's a lot of methane being emitted. So we tell nearly farmers to input more organic matters into the farmland. But then it emits more methane. So between the conventional agriculture method and the organic agriculture method, which is to cover crop reduction, there comes a dilemma. In the center of it lies methane. So maybe we need to look at it not only from a negative perspective, but maybe we could turn that into an opportunity to develop it into a sink. Wrapping up, the land is emitting methane because it is supplied with continuous water. So cut water, that's one way. And management of the organic matters can be another one, and you could also manage the tillage. And I look forward to, and I expect there will be a development of more aggressive inhibitors of methane. So you spread 1.5 ton, then it's going to be, have an effect of reducing 20 to 30 tons of reduce, reduction of methane. So in the end, it's going to save the earth instead of messing up with the earth. I don't know about investment, but I think it's prospective of field for investments. So I told you, you should stop, cut the water, right? This is what happened. When you cut the water for three weeks, then you'll have the effect of reducing about 40% methane emission. And we've been working on this research for a long time now. Also, calcium silicate manure processing effect. There is a government support in processing this manure. And then when you process more calcium silicate manure, there is less emission of methane. So I calculated one ton of calcium silicate manure will lead to 14% of reduction. This is an example in Kim Hee International Eco Village. Little villages are not capable of operating such a project. So they bound a few villages together. We persuaded them to work together. And then they, we offered supply of biochar for the increase of soil carbon content. Also, to reduce methane emission in the rice paddy for three weeks of cutting the midsummer drainage. Also, the input of the calcium silicate manure. When we input biochar, you can cut 7.67 ton of CO2. And cutting the midsummer drainage for three weeks, you could reduce the methane, CO2 by 2.92 tons. Now, the land area is very important because it connects directly to the economic effect. So when you bound all these farmlands together, right? It's going to create, lead to, for a voluntary reduction market, it's going to have about 120,000 Korean won worth. And in the external market, it's going to be traded, excuse me, from 380,000 to 600,000 Korean won per hectare. It's a great opportunity, I think. Thank you very much for listening.
네 고맙습니다. 오늘 아주 흥미롭게 이야기 다양하게 해주셨는데요. 김필주 경상대학교 교수님 함께 하셨습니다. 다음에는요 저희가 업무 협약을 체결하기에 앞서서 오늘 체, 핵 죄송합니다. 체결식에 협약되는 자발적 탄소 시장 플랫폼 아우라를 간단하게 소개해 올리는 시간을 갖도록 하겠습니다. 소개를 위해서는 제시은 기후변화센터 기후협력 팀장님께서 함께 하시겠습니다. 큰 박수 부탁드립니다.
Hello, I am Xi Eun Chee. And I am a team leader of Climate Change Center. Like Professor Kim said, greenhouse gas reductions in the agricultural field is really important. And how that kind of reduction results can be shared with the public, well, it requires a public platform. The Climate Change Center this year established a global platform for voluntary carbon market named Aura. So I'm going to tell you about what Aura is first. Aura is a voluntary carbon market platform that is designed to vitalize voluntary carbon market in Korea and contribute to greenhouse gas reduction. It is a byproduct of two entities, Climate Change Center and RDI Echo. And Climate Change Center is an institution established in Korea for the first time with a strong objective to address climate change risks. It is non NGO agency. And we are working really hard. And our partner, RDI Echo, is an IT company that has a strong technological prowess in the third generation blockchain technology. So I said that it is a voluntary carbon market platform. So what is the voluntary carbon market? Market, well, you know, when you come to carbon market, there are two types of market, voluntary and non voluntary. So this VCM is for players with no reduction obligations. So these players do not have obligations to reduce their emissions, but they still can take part in greenhouse reduction movement and trade carbon credits and results. So it can also make some contribution to our total global gas emissions reduction. And well, of course, we gave a lot of thought when naming this platform. Aura is actually a shortened form for Alliance for Our Responsible Action. And it is also, it has a similar sound of a Spanish word aura, which means now. So by making this name, we wanted to encourage people to take actions now and be more responsible now. And the objective of establishing this platform is to encourage, encourage voluntary players to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And also to create some carbon credit that can be used to offset carbon production of large companies. So Climate Change Center is playing a central role in this. And many other NGOs are working with us. So it has a value of public interest. And we are also ensuring the professional capabilities by getting some advices from other external specialists. And we also have technological prowess as we are working with the blockchain specialized company, RDI Echo. So the reason we established this platform, well, we have to think about the trend at home and abroad because they are kind of different with one another. When you think about the global trend, you first need to think about the Paris Agreement, of course. And in Glasgow recently, the Paris Agreement adopted the specific rule for implementation with the Article 6. So this is going to give a rapid rise in global voluntary carbon market. So this means that we are expecting that the global voluntary carbon market will increase by 50 times in coming years compared to 2020. And many global enterprises like Google and Apple are actively participating in VCM already. So if you look at their sustainability reporting, they make some declaration like how many carbons or emissions they reduce voluntarily and how much, how many credits they earned by doing that. And their voluntary actions are well recognized by financial sector or investors as well. However, in Korea, such trends are not really significant yet. In Korea, we do not have any guidelines or platforms or ESG standard for, standards that recognizes the role of VCM. However, global trading market and investors market are changing. They are becoming more and more global. So many players in Korea are also part of the global supply chain. And they tend to recognize increasingly the importance and the role of VCM. So many companies now are developing and devising new strategies for ESC management. And in this, in doing this, they are also considering using using VCM because that is a way to get a carbon credit which can offset their carbon emissions. So this is why we developed Aura VCM for the Korean market. So we do have a mission like this that you see on the screen. And ultimately, we would like to finalize the VCM in Korea and thereby making contributions to the mitigation of climate change and addressing climate risks. We are also working with a lot of experts. One of the advisors to Aura is Chairman Che Cha Che, who is also the president of BIE and the director, board of International Eco Farming Network. He is also, he also was an ambassador to climate change. And we do have the president, as you can see, for our organizing committee. And we are also getting a lot of advices from specialized consultants and experts from different fields so that we can enhance the soundness and usefulness of our service. And lastly, I can give you the explanation on the two major services that Aura provides. Well, when it comes to greenhouse gas emissions reduction, there can be various projects. And Aura provides a service to evaluate and verify such reduction projects. If one project is to be labeled as green or as a reduction, emissions reduction project, it needs to be verified by a third party. And we do have a lot of experiences in this field. So we can work with a third party or independent parties from home and abroad to verify the greenness or the reduction quality of various projects. And if they are verified as green and reduction, emissions reduction project, they can get Aura Carbon Unit or Carbon Credit. And these credits can also be traded on our service or on our platform so that many other companies can purchase these credits to offset their emissions. So this is the basic idea behind Aura. And our ultimate goal is to better utilize this platform so that more players in the market can take part in greenhouse gas emissions reduction voluntarily. So I would like to expect more participation from all of you and particularly businesses. So currently, we are running a pilot project in Poonhwa Village that Mr. Kim just mentioned. So by running this project, we are trying to create carbon credits and trade them on our platform. So International Forum on Eco Farming and RT Eco are working with us for this pilot project. And they are going to sign an MOU signing process on the stage. So they're going to come up to the stage very soon. So I'll be ending my speech here, and we will go on.
Thank you, Ms. Che, for your detailed introduction. And as she mentioned, for the better utilization of Aura, which focuses on providing a platform for voluntary carbon trading market, there is going to be an MOU signing ceremony. So the International Network for Eco Farming aims to share current knowledge about healthy food and base eco-friendly eco-farming to develop agriculture models. And RT Eco is an IT company that offers blockchain-based platform solutions and security services. And the two institutions will now have an MOU signing ceremony. And the ceremony will serve to promote awareness in eco-farming, present a platform that can reduce GHG for investment in eco-farming as well as to foster research in the voluntary carbon trading market. So I ask for all your support and interest for this ceremony. So we'll now first invite Che Cha Che, ESG International Conference President and BOD Chairman of the International Network for Eco Farming to the stage. And we'll also invite Yumi Kim, CEO of RT Eco. So please take your seats. So please pick up the pen and go ahead and sign on the MOU. This memorandum of understanding was signed on August 12, 2022 between the International Network for Eco Farming and RT Eco. If you signed, please hold it up so that we could take a picture. Okay? Thank you very much. Why don't you come in front of the table for the photo shoot? Please give them a big round of applause for spending each other's will and promising to cooperate. So we'll invite all the stakeholders to the stage for the group commemorative photo. For this MOU to be signed, there were a lot of support endeavors by so many. So we'd like to ask all the relevant stakeholders to please come up to the stage and take the picture together. For the active revitalization and promotion of the awareness for eco-farming, we have just carried out this MOU signing ceremony. How about we say hoiting with your masks off? So smile. Thank you very much. This concludes the MOU signing ceremony. Please give them another big round of applause. Okay, so this now concludes the special session. We'll take a coffee break and start session three at four thirty Korea time. Thank you.